Yeah.
Okay, I'm showing 5:30, so I'll officially call to order the City Corpus Christi Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, 2023. Ms. Ruth, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman Miller?
Here.
Vice Chairman York?
Here.
Commissioner Mendel?
Here.
Commissioner Salazar Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Munoz?
Here.
Commissioner Otagi?
Here.
Commissioner Lerman?
Here.
Commissioner Hedrick?
Here.
Commissioner Bud?
Here.
We have a quorum to conduct the meeting.
Thank you so much. Moving on to public comment, will you please read in the rules of the quorum?
Yes, Chairman. Public comment, citizens will be allowed to attend and make public comments in person at city planning commission meetings. The public is invited to speak on any agenda item and any other items that pertain to the planning commission. Comments are limited to three minutes. If you choose to speak during this period, you will not be allowed to speak again when the specific item is being considered in order of the agenda.
All right, thank you. I'll make a quick note. If anybody is here to speak on the new zoning case, item number 10, that has been pulled from the agenda for this meeting. Is anybody here would like to speak on that item during public comment, since it will not be coming up as an item for consideration? I see none, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment. Okay. So we have, we're gonna be, we're hosting a public comment section that's typically for items that aren't on the agenda, or any general public comment that anybody would like to make. If you are here for item number 10, which is the new zoning case for Thanksgiving homes at 3029 Sabina Street, that will not be an item for consideration tonight, but you're more than welcome to make your comments at this time, and we will consider them for when it's read in two weeks, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the two nice letters that just came in, we will be honoring their public notices, we will record them into the record, and if they have comment, they can make that at this time.
But you're gonna be re-noticing?
Yes, sir.
So they're going to get another yellow slip?
Get another yellow slip, but if by chance they didn't respond to the other one, we will still honor this one.
Right. And we're respectful of everybody's time, and we're incredibly apologetic that you showed up here to speak on that item, but if you would like to speak now, you may? Would you like to speak now, or come back in two weeks?
I just want to know what the meeting was really about, but I already didn't know. I think the building everywhere, your wife, my guy.
[laughing]
Miller, it will be the January 10th meeting.
I came because I just wanted to know what the meeting was about, because the property they're talking about is right behind my house.
Yes, ma'am. And Andrew, would you like to give her your card, and maybe give her a call, or have her give you a call, so that you can, because I guess you're probably curious about, you know, what this is all about, and what the implications are, considering it's somebody behind your fence?
What they intend to do with that property behind me.
Right.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much.
I don't need to be here for anything else.
[laughing] All right. Thank you, and sorry again. So I'll come back to the public comment. Would anybody like to speak on anything not today, or not on the agenda tonight? Ms. Meyer? And I'm not going through my phone, but I'm setting a three-minute timer.
She is setting up the power point. Oh, that'd be great. No, that's good. I'm gonna be black, but.
Okay, just state your name and address for the record.
All right. It's Carrie Meyer, 4401 Gulf Breeze Boulevard on North Beach. I'm here to present this information. We have two other people from our group as well, from the North Beach Community Association. It's about 4513 Gulf Breeze Boulevard, and we're bringing it to the planning commission, simply to make you aware of this as an example of something that could happen in our city. Since you're planning the future of our city, and North Beach is, you know, really developing, we think that this is important for y'all to hear. This is an extensive renovation project being permitted on North Beach in a FEMA zone. So the next slide, how do I do that, y'all? How do you do the next slide? Shoot. Huh? Oh, there we go. Backwards, okay. This is how this building, these buildings have looked in the past, for the past 15 years. Just one guy lives there that owned it, and he had one car. In 2020, it flooded in Hurricane Hannah. This is the building on the ground in a VE zone, a velocity zone, and you can see the foundations were underwater, under salt water for quite some time. There's the FEMA map showing it is in a VE zone, elevation 11. This is a side shot of the buildings shot this year. The back two units there on the right are the worst. It's building four and five, and they're just in really bad shape. But this guy, We Buy Cash Houses, bought it and has come in to make renovations. And first thing he did was to put new roofs on with no permit on a Sunday, got reported, ended up, Development Services came out, gave him a permit after that. After the roof went on, that's a brand-new roof, you can see how the building itself is having to be held up with four-by-fours, so it doesn't collapse. Yet, so that's unit four that we were just looking at. Unit five is on the right, down below of the bottom picture here. You can see there's, the wood is just completely rotted, all around the inside, all in the walls. This is the renovation cost that the owner is doing, is providing. And Gordon's gonna go into this a little bit more, but they're really low. If any of you guys know about construction costs for renovation, we feel like that these numbers are very low. There's no, it is done by a contractor that's registered with the city, but the numbers just seem extremely low. And so the city's going on that for the 50% rule, saying that you can bring it all up, you don't have to bring it up to code at all, you can just fix the building as if it was built, whenever it was built. Parking is really one of the main issues that we're concerned about, because this is, the actual lot is drawn in red, and there's, there's five buildings, because it's all grandfathered. They're three feet apart, they're all on the ground, the two in the back are falling down, and then the only place to park is where you can see that one white vehicle is parked. This is one little driveway. The person is gonna rent out all those buildings. Okay, okay, I know, that's my timer.
Ma'am, just gonna wrap up your comment.
Yeah. Last slide is precedent-setting, allowing these five grandfathered units, which were built over 50 years ago on the ground in a flood zone, to be rebuilt, places a burden on FEMA, on neighboring properties, and on the future of North Beach. We ask that the city reexamine its decision to permit this project and do its due diligence to require actual cost receipts and ensure adequate parking for five rental units. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer. Gordon, I can't read the last name.
Hi, I'm Gordon Awesome, and I live at One Virginia Hills Drive in Corpus Christi, and I'm a developer that was before you two years ago, and the commission approved my development plan for 14 units a block away from this site, and we have the site improvement permit now and are proceeding with the site utilities. However, what I'm here to say is that I've appreciated working with Development Services and the Planning Commission, the council in this town. You are reasonable to deal with, and as a developer that's done business all over the country, it's refreshing. And so I have nothing negative to say, except I think that this is a mistake to not look at the details on this project. It doesn't fit with the comprehensive plan of North Beach. It's a substandard building that wasn't occupied for 15 years. The contractor said he could do it for $1,700, or $1,300 in carpentry labor at your minimum wage for carpentry helpers in this town. That would be 95 hours, and there's no reason to believe you can rebuild 15 chicken coops for 90, 95 hours of labor. I'm saying it to the planning commission, because it's relative to your keeping the comprehensive plan for North Beach, where you're investing tens of millions of dollars of money to solve problems and redevelop the area. So, thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir. And Ron Graban?
Good evening, everyone. Ron Graban, the president of North Beach Community Association. This project is a tough one for the neighborhood, because for a couple reasons. It was in extreme disrepair, it was empty for years and years and years, which I'm not sure if that even fits the uniform development code, which allows for a grandfather clause for something that has been vacant for so long. But in addition, it's precedent-setting for others, and Mr. Zanoni, along with the city council, is trying to revitalize North Beach, and projects like this work against, I think, what they're trying to do. FEMA is potentially going to have to come in and step in when there's a major hurricane, and there's a loss of property, and hopefully not loss of life, but it just doesn't fit in the neighborhood. I know I have a million-dollar project down the road. Gordon's getting ready to build a multimillion-dollar project the other way, and that's new, that's according to the new codes and new standards, this one doesn't fit all of that. So if you would just maybe have, take a second look, or encourage those who are involved in this to take a second look, we would really appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. We do have Mr. Garza and Mr. Munoz signed up. Did y'all wanna speak now, or, okay. All right, would anybody else like to make a public comment on any general items not pertaining to a specific agenda item? I see none, so I will close the public comment, move on to the approval of absences, which we have none, and so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from November 29th, 2023.
Second.
There is a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Chairman, could you please tell me who did the motion in second? Mendel, okay, thank you.
Mendel, and second by Munoz. Okay, moving on to discussion of possible action regarding the planning commission and Airport Zoning Commission meeting calendar for 2024.
Chair, the calendar before you has the dates for the 2024 Planning Commission meetings in the third column. We've also showed the plating cycles for the 30-day track and the 60-day track as well, and we also have programmed four meetings for the Airport Zoning Commission, should there be business to conduct. So we are requesting your consideration of the calendar.
All right. Does any commissioners have any questions for staff, or I'll entertain a motion?
I've got a question. You've got a meeting on here on November 27th, which is the day before Thanksgiving. I know it's like every other week, so it just falls that way, but is that, is that one that would potentially just get canceled, or is that one that needs to be moved? Or do you intend to have one the day before?
Well, it's not a city holiday. It's up to this commission. If this commission would prefer not to have a meeting that date, you could make that motion.
Thank you.
Again, we would wanna adjust the application cycles for that as well, if that were to be canceled.
Y'all have any comments?
I know it's technically, a lot of people are open, but then a lot of people leave, so. That's the only one I saw in here that had a really good potential for not having a quorum.
Say we just look at it whenever it gets here.
Yeah, that could be reconsidered in September, in the fall, as well.
Right.
October.
Works for me. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the calendar as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, consent, public hearing, possible actions, items, just A and C, I guess.
Good evening, everyone. Commissioners, Mark Orosco, Planner III with Development Services. Welcome you back to our last commission meeting of the year, with Nina serving as our secretary, hoping the best in her retirement. As consent item B has been pulled, I'll be reading to record consent items A and C, starting off with the Platts. Number three, Flower Bluff Estates. Number two, it's a replat of .38 acres. Number four, Nanjing Park Edition, Block Six, Lot 6R, replat of 1.11 acres, located at 4060 Pydra Island. Number five is Dunbar Edition, Block A, lots 19A, 20A, 21A, 21B, 22A, 22B, 23A, and 23B. This is a replat of .80, excuse me, acres. This is located on Sabina Street between Towson Street and Dunbar Street. Item number six, Osso River Estates, Unit Three, Block One, Lots 1A, 1B, and 1C. This is the final plat of 18.01 acres. This is located along Innes-Jostin between Holly Road and SPID. Number seven, Azali Estates, Unit Three, final plat of 13.87 acres, located east of Fred's Folly and north of Yorktown Boulevard. Moving on, number eight, Paul Court. This is a conditional approval for Paul Court, Block 11, Lot 6A, replat of .79 acres, located south of Comanche Street and west of North Staple Street. Item number nine, it is a conditional plat as well, conditional approval, Caspian subdivision, Unit One, final of 19.49 acres, located south of FM 43, and, sorry, and which is Weber Road and east of County Road 43. Moving on with consent item C, Saratoga Ridge Water Master Plan Amendment. This is an ordinance amending the water master plan. A public utility element of the comprehensive plan of the City of Corpus Christi by amending water lines along Saratoga Boulevard for a new development named Saratoga Ridge. It is located along Saratoga Boulevard and southeast of Old Brownsville Road and northwest of County Road 35. City staff is reviewing approval of this item along with the Platts, as the Platts are meeting the TRC comments and the Texas Local Government Code. Staff is on standby for any questions to consent items A and C.
Does anybody have any questions for staff on items A or C?
I got one on C.
Commissioner York?
Yeah, on, on item 11, the master plan, I went through all the documents. I don't have any issue with what's being proposed, but I just wanted to get clarification. It was really hard to tell on the exhibits what's the difference, so what was actually being changed. From what I could see, sewer doesn't change, but water changed, just because it wasn't defined in the area. So just wanted to see if you could confirm that.
Sure. Nick Winkelman, Assistant Director, CCW. So you're, you're correct. The wastewater lines for the development along Saratoga are already in the master plan. It's the water line that's, that's along Saratoga is not in the master plan, and that's what the amendment's for, is for the 12-inch water line.
Okay. That's all I need. Thanks.
Any other questions for staff?
I have a question on item number nine. Is this area already annexed by the city?
Yes, it is.
On the plat itself, it shows two roads, County Road 43, and then something to the north of that. Both of those roads don't exist yet, so is the developer going to put those in prior to recording, or what's the, the plan for that?
County Road 43?
Yes.
So that's...
It's like a dirt road.
Yes, that is, that is correct. That is part of the TRC comments, that that road is required. It will be, it's a rural section road, and then when the development reaches a threshold, this is per the preliminary plat that was approved, when the development reaches a threshold, then they'll have to do a C1 collector.
And can you refresh us on what the policy is for fire code access, for having two roads, or one road, and the number of homes, and how that process works?
Yeah, 50 homes requires a secondary access.
And is that at plating, or is that at permitting?
That's at permitting.
So someone counts each house that gets done, and they're gonna follow that, and then when 51 happens, they're gonna stop it?
Yes, that would be it. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And it's also governed through plat phases. This is Phase One of the plat, so as, you know, there is an adopted preliminary plat for this area, and as the different phases are built out, it's controlled through that as well.
Because I just know in the past, we've done other neighborhoods with, you know, the amount of homes like this that have been required to put in two points of access from the very beginning, as opposed to waiting until so many homes are built. So I'm just curious, you know, is that normal? Did something change? You know, what's, what's the true policy on that?
The benchmark, I believe, is 80 for two, for two access points, coming off of that main road, off of FM 43.
So the fire code is 80 homes can be built before two entrances are required?
I think that's two different codes. One's access and circulation, which is a planning thing. The other one's fire. One's 80, the fire one is, used to be 30, now it's 50.
Sure, I can jump into Andrew Demus with Development Services, that the UDC for a time said 81, still does on text. The fire code changed to 50, reduced that number, so we went to match those two codes. So that, that will be an upcoming UDC amendment to make sure fire code and UDC are aligning.
So it's at permitting of each individual lot, not at the plat itself?
At the plat stage, what the UDC states is that you must identify future or current connections. It doesn't necessarily say you must construct both. At the permitting stage is when we have to literally click one by one, and when you get to that 51st home, the second point of access must be constructed. But you do have to, at some point on the plat, on the preliminary especially, show where that connection point will be.
Does this, this looks like it has right about 50, or maybe slightly more. Does, is it listed on there? How many lots is Phase One?
I think it's like 60.
60?
But as Nina mentioned, with Caspian, it used to be Kings Lake West, which was one large development. It was then split in half by the sale. The, the agreement that we came to was that when the, each development reaches 50% of density, they will have to upgrade from a rural street standard for County Road 43 to a full C1 collector.
Was the fire department involved in the review? Do they know that this is gonna go in with more than the 50 units and one access on 43?
So as, as fire is, just holds hands with us at every time a permit is reviewed, and every residential permit, we'll have to keep them informed that they're approaching. And of course, we're not gonna wait to the 50th house and not say anything.
I mean, do they see this one, and actually look at it? Most Platts, they just submit like 50 informational comments, but sometimes they actually get involved, and I'm just curious, did they have discussions on this, or?
Yes, and the exact same question that Commissioner Hendrick brought up, is that we will have to track as homes come in, and at a reasonable point, maybe at the halfway point of that 50 homes, at 25, say, okay, you're at 25 homes, you're starting to get close, you might wanna go ahead and construct that secondary access point to stay consistent with the plat.
Thank you.
So if a developer sells every single lot to, let's just say, 60 different individuals, it's just a rat race to who can get there first?
You know, the, the hard part will be if the person at the very end of the block builds first. Whoever builds first, yes, that, that's gonna be a challenge, but that's something that I'm hoping the owner will convey to each builder, and keep them in the loop, of course, keep us in the loop, that we can have that three-way conversation.
And then if the developer just skips out after he sells every lot, then who's gonna be responsible to build that road?
It'll get to the point that ultimately who's, who's left holding the bag, and that'll be the builder at the end of the day. If, if they were not informed, it's their building permit that's gonna be challenged, that they do not have adequate two points of access.
Okay. Thank you.
Buyer beware. Okay, any other, any further comments or questions for staff?
Just one, is that the Phase Two of this come into the city yet?
No.
Okay.
Just a preliminary plat that's been approved.
So in theory, if we, if, if Phase Two comes in, the city could hold the approval of that until the road is built, because they'd be over that 50 threshold. Okay.
Okay, there's no further questions for staff. I will open up the public comment for consent items A and C. Anybody like to speak on any of those items? I see none, so I'll close the public comment and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve items three through nine and 11, as presented by staff.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to item number twelve, Public Carrying Discussion Possible Action, Land Use Assumptions, Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, Roadway Master Plans, and Their Associated Capital Improvement Plans.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Al Raymond, Director of Development Services. Our department has been managing the master planning and impact fee contract, which Pape Dawson won the solicitation since March of March of twenty twenty-one. The updated future land use assumptions, the master plans, and the associated capital improvement projects or plans, all of that, all of that data that fed into the maps that you see back here were vetted by, were vetted by the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. What is that, what is the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee? That is the committee that's the steering, the steering group that 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 gives direction to to all of the effort that led to the creation of the master plans. That group is, the SEAC members are required by the Texas Local Government Code three ninety-five. So the city council and the city manager selected fifteen individuals that acted as a steering committee over these last two and a half years to get to the point where we are now. What we are doing now in the process, even coming before you, we are now at a point where we can have public meetings and discuss, let everyone see graphically the master plans and discuss in a public forum where we were, how we got here, and this is what we produced. And so, as you know, over the last couple of, over the last month or so, you attended some workshops. SEAC has attended many workshops. We're now doing community meetings, many of you have been there. And now we're here before you, before we go to city council on January twenty-third of next year. So we are briefing all all committees, the Infrastructure Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, and just everyone, right? To to kind of get the information out, to a lot of questions to be asked, everyone can can kind of understand, again, where we were, what we've done, and how we've gotten here. So this is a courtesy briefing to the Planning Commission. I hope that once we we're finished, you will support it as well as we'll, as we take this to city council on January twenty-third. So I'm going to introduce Kim Kiefer with Pape Dawson, and she's going to go through the presentation with you. Kim?
Thank you, Al. Good evening. It's good to see you all again. Since you've all been at the previous workshops that were held for the Water, Wastewater, Stormwater, and Roadway Master Plan, tonight's presentation is going to be pretty brief. We want to allow some time at the end for questions or discussion on additional items for these master plans. And also, we hope tonight's presentation will provide some clarification from the comments we received in the workshop. So the capital improvement plan and the impact fee master plan process is pretty linear in nature. And in order to not waste any of the city's funding, it's, we followed the very prescribed procedure from chapter three ninety-five. That is the chapter of the Texas Code that allows for the implementation of impact fees. Now, we're not recommending impact fees tonight or anything like that, but we don't want to waste the city's money. So we don't want to have to go back and redo something if the city wants to move forward with that. And it's not a bad methodology for doing this part of the process. And just like a good GPS system, you, we're going to have a roadmap here. You can see that the first part of the map is in purple. That is what the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee does. And we will be talking a little bit more about them in just a second. And then the second part of this is, if this works, there we go, goes to city council. So we're we're on our way. And by the way, this is where we are. So after the last basically two years' worth of effort, we have finished the land use assumptions. We have finished the capital improvements plan. Now, to be fair, we did not do this in a vacuum. We had the help of many, many people. The first of which would be the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, also known as SEAC. These are the people who are on SEAC. Oops, let me go back. There we go. Oh, this mouse has a mind of its own. There we go. I'll just let it go. Anyways, per chapter three ninety-five, forty percent of the people who are on SEAC need to be from the real estate development and building community, and the other sixty percent can be all others. And so we followed that procedure. The fifteen people on the screen represent that same kind of balance of those two. And it's been actually very, very helpful. They are a very hardworking committee. You'll see in a minute that they've had to understand a number of complex engineering and planning concepts during their tenure. They've been very involved. They've requested additional meetings on occasion to make sure they understood what it was that they were doing. And they actually provided a great deal of local knowledge, which helped Pape Dawson to craft the master plans that we have today. Talk about hardworking. You saw the slide before. They've gone through twenty-three meetings with us, SEAC. We have five more scheduled through twenty twenty-four. You can see a little bit about what kind of each of those meetings were. I talked earlier about not not doing this in the vacuum. The other component to this was the city's departments. We met twelve different times face-to-face with the city's departments, including Public Works, Corpus Christi Water, Planning Department. We had another, a number of informal meetings with these departments. We went through quite a back-and-forth process vetting the master plan review and making sure all the comments were addressed. So we feel like between the city itself and SEAC and the knowledge that we bring as Pape Dawson, that we had a pretty good and robust master planning process. So what is this process? What is the starting point? See, now the mouse doesn't work. There we go. We started with the city's area development plans. The city has invested quite a bit of of time and effort to create these area development plans, and they represent the various portions of the city. So everything we did moving forward kind of tied back to these area development plans where possible. You'll also know, because you're all from here, that the ADPs are at different stages of their growth. Some are pretty much built out. Others are just now beginning to build out. The London area is not quite on this plan. We added them as part of this process. There is area, there is an area up in the northwest that we called Cal Allen that we also added. It's outside the city limits, but it is inside the city's ETJ. So we have a little bit more than what's on the map, but this is what we began to craft our plans on, is starting with these areas. So where did we start? Well, as I said earlier, it's a very linear concept. We needed to get from point A, which is right now, to point C, which is ultimate growth. And then chapter three ninety-five requires us to get to point B, which is ten years down the road, because chapter three ninety-five wants a ten-year CIP. So when we looked at, when we started this process, we looked at the city's existing land use plans, and we looked at their future land use plan, existing point A, future land use point C. All right, this is great. We can define infrastructure to get from here to here. Now, what portion of this infrastructure will bring us back to the ten-year plan? And that is why we needed to go in and look at how that growth is going to occur. So we looked at a number of data points. We started with the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization's growth information that was available in twenty twenty-one. We aggregated it again by the ADPs. We looked at the annual lot addition growth rate. And a little bit of caution on there, because those growth rates were taken from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and a little bit from twenty twenty-two, so that was prime COVID time. But we also went back, and the Planning Department provided us their growth information for several of the ADPs. And finally, we went back to the SEAC, and we said, here's kind of where we are. What do you think? And they provided information like, you know what? Airport's not going to have housing up there. That's, that ADP shouldn't have residential. So we dropped that to zero, even though MPO said it should be four percent. So you could, you could see the amount of information and coordination that went in to having this growth rate. Again, we did each of the ADPs separately. There is not one combined growth rate for the city, because all of these ADPs are at a different stage of their growth. One of the ones I want to point out to you, however, is the one showing for London, because it looks out of place with that ten point six percent annual growth rate. So let me explain a little bit about it. The the SEAC and Pape Dawson were looking at that area, and ultimately, we decided that it would be two hundred homes per year. So if you start with a thousand homes, that's a ten point six. If you start with two thousand homes, it's significantly less. Identifying the number of occupied homes down in the London area was difficult. But because we could say, oh, wait, let's just use two hundred per year, we felt very comfortable, based on the forty percent real estate people opinions, that that's how London would grow. And we're seeing that now with a lot of the lots that are being platted. So now we have our point A existing. Ultimately, we know where we're going. We can sit there and come from point A and use those growth rates to get to point B. So what is the next step of the process? Well, we're going to define assets for the ultimate and then figure out which of those assets are really needed for just the ten years. So we go all the way out, and then we come back to ten years. And in that way, we can come up with a ten-year plan that's consistent with chapter three ninety-five. And also, you know, kind of gives you a roadmap on how you're going to develop here at the, in the City of Corpus Christi. Now, one of the things to note is the city does this each year, to some extent, as part of their capital improvement plan. There is a capital improvement plan sitting out on the web right now, and it gives you ten years' worth of projects. Does the city fund all ten years' worth of projects? No. What it does is it looks at what it needs the upcoming year. But that other nine years kind of gives you a peek through the door, if you will, about what's coming. That's the same thing with these master plans, and it's the same thing with these capital improvement plans that we're presenting today. We're not asking for any kind of encumbrance of billions of dollars. We're just giving you a peek through the doorway of what's coming, should growth occur. So on water, you can see we have near term, and it says zero to five. Really, that's the next two years or so, and then the ten-year. These improvements match up pretty closely with what is inside your CIP now that was approved. Okay? The one thing that's a little bit different is when this will occur in the phasing. A lot of it is front-loaded in the near term. That includes projects like the desalination facility, one of, one of the two. And there's a lot of pipe that has to be replaced in the City of Corpus Christi. It's reached the end of its useful life. So those are big-ticket items, and that's why you're seeing such a large number up there. But it's not unheard of to require one point eight billion. And and so our plan pretty much confirmed what you already have in there. It should also be noted that some of these, these numbers are supported by the analysis that we did. The one thing that could potentially stretch out is some of the money in the one million would go to the, to the ten-year process. Now, are all of these improvements needed for existing customers? No, they're not. Some of them are needed for future growth. So when we move forward, we have to define what is growth-related and what is not, so that we don't put the burden of projects that are for growth on existing users, and we try and preserve the funding that you have for your existing projects with your existing users and growth to your growth users. So the idea is to be as consistent as possible and make sure we stretch your dollars as much as possible. So that's water. If we move on to wastewater, we have a similar scenario. Now you can see we have some ultimate, because when we looked at a plan's point C, there were some projects that we didn't need in ten years, but we ultimately will need. A lot of that is treatment plant-related. The near-term improvements are associated with the consent decree. That is the agreement that the city has with EPA to make sure they no longer have adverse sanitary sewer events. So that two hundred and sixty-six, almost two hundred and sixty-seven million up there in near term is mostly to make sure that the sewage stays in the pipes. But you have a fifteen-year window to complete a lot of those projects. So some of those trickle into that ten-year item. And then ultimately, we have some lift stations for some areas that we'll build out. One of those areas would be like Flower Bluff. So if you're over in the Flower Bluff area and you're on the west side, it's not very developed yet. A lot of it sits in the hundred-year. Ultimately, it could develop. That improvement would be sitting out in the ultimate condition if we wanted to to look at how that project compares. Now, one of the things, again, we are not asking to encumber nine hundred and thirty-one million dollars. And we're also saying that should growth not occur, then some of those ten-year projects might shift out a little bit farther to ultimate. The growth needs to trigger some of these projects. So that is the wastewater master plan summary. Stormwater is a little bit different. Stormwater is not so much predicated on the number of households as it is where the rain falls and where it goes once it's hit the ground. When we did the stormwater master plan, we divided it into two categories, developed areas and what would need to be done to facilitate getting that rain away from structures as fast as possible. And then Oso Creek, where a lot of the development is going to occur over the next several years, again, it's, it's coming out to be just about seven hundred million dollars. Does all of that need to be encumbered? No. But again, it's just a roadmap to get from A to C, and you decide what occurs in between. And finally, we have, maybe, the roadway master plan. So again, this is the one master plan that is different from the other three in that, according to chapter three ninety-five, any improvements that we define for roadway have to be inside the city limits. So we can't, we can't do roadway master plan outside the city limits. So all the projects, the one point six billion dollars' worth of projects are all the projects needed inside of the city. And again, near-term improvements are already funded, because you all have let your bond. But you can see the ten-year and the ultimate. And again, part of this is just saying, all right, to get to point C, we need this much. But really, in the first ten years, we need this much. And if development does not occur in a particular area, then that improvement would slide. It wouldn't be required until development triggered it. So that's how the master plans are set up. And they are set so that we can identify what is needed for your existing citizens now, what improvements they need, and then what is needed in the next ten years. And finally, ultimately, what would it look like when everything is developed according to the future land use plan in the City of Corpus Christi? So with that, I will go to say, oh, you should say questions, but it does not. So questions, comments, discussion?
Is there questions for the folks at Pape Dawson? Commissioner York?
Okay, I know that you're not doing the impact fees now, but the impact fees will be based on what's coming up today. So I have a question regarding that. I saw some things in the documents uploaded, I think in the stormwater, about kind of calculating an impact fee. First, just generally, the impact fee is going to be, or will the impact fee be kind of backed out of the total cost in these projects? That, is that sort of how the process works?
So, we okay to move on to impact fee? Sure. Okay, I will. Thanks. So the answer is yes. So what would happen is, on any one of these projects, there's two components. There is a, we have to do it for the, for the people or businesses who are here now. And then this is how much goes to growth. And the part that goes to growth is what is divided by the number of people to come up with a fee. And then chapter three ninety-five allows two different methodologies for further refining that fee. And it can either be fifty percent of whatever that calculation is, or there's a lot of math that can go into it where we have to do bond review and that kind of thing. that can go into it where we have to do bond review and that kind of thing.
I get that. I remember seeing that, and I saw some of that in the documents. What I'm curious about, so you have like the 10-year, you have near term, you have 10-year, you have ultimate on most of these, the stormwater did not have that.
Right.
But that, when you get to the next stage and go to look, you know, how much are we going to do our, you know, how much will our impact fee base, impact fee be based on? Will it be the 10-year number or the ultimate number, or is that, is there a state requirement?
The state requirement is the 10-year number. So we would be looking at the 10-year number, and we would look at that portion of the 10-year number that is associated with growth. If there are any items in the near term that could also be associated with growth, they would also be eligible to be part of the impact fee equation.
And for stormwater, the Oso Creek is your requirement.
Thank you.
Could you repeat that for the audience, please?
Yes. On the stormwater master plan, the Oso Creek line item in the presentation is equivalent to the 10-year plan if we were looking at the 10-year plan for future funding consideration and impact fees.
Okay. Thank you. Another question I had, I had some comments that were sent to me by a local civil engineer, and one of the things he pointed out, he said, "These aren't actually master plans, they're capital improvement plans," and it got me thinking, so I looked, and I actually couldn't find what I would call master plans. I know that you did a master plan study, and there's a lot of research done, and I think all of that was good work, but when I say master plan, and what this engineer was referring to is like the actual maps of the entire city. So I couldn't find it online, so I just wanted to ask. Are there, I know there's maps that show the capital improvement projects that are proposed, but are there maps that show the entire city and the ultimate, every, you know, for sewer, for example, the every lines, you know, "We need an eight-inch here, 12-inch, 15-inch," so on and so forth, for the whole city?
Those are disaggregated into the individual projects. So if you have a map that says that this needs to be something other than an eight-inch line, you'll have a map for that. We did not create one map for the entire city, although that certainly is doable.
Well, I don't, yeah, I don't care if it's one map, but I just, I didn't see one that says, "This is our ultimate master plan." Are you saying that that is the same thing as the capital, as the one that shows the projects that are proposed?
What? Correct.
Yeah, and that's fine. That's pretty typical for master plan. I just wanted to make sure, because...
If you were to open, for example, if you were to open the wastewater master plan, and you found a project, you should be able to see a near-term dollar amount, a 10-year dollar amount, and an ultimate dollar amount. And in fact, the master plan text proper also divides them that way, and the ultimate projects are the ones that take us out to Point C.
Does this, so one of the thing, and part of the reason why I'm asking this is because one of the, I saw something in the water master plan, the document, that says, "Projects that aren't growth-related," or it may have said, "Can't be used with impact fees," something were not considered. And so that made me wonder, does that mean they're not, the maps only show growth-related projects for impact fees, or, and there's other capital improvements that would not be funded that aren't on the map?
So on this master plan, when you see that near term that includes $1 million worth of improvements, those are all of the projects that are identified, whether they're growth-related or not. The water master plan portion that you're referring to is when they needed to put a percentage to growth. They only did it for the projects that would have growth. If the project was 100% maintenance or rehabilitation, it could not be considered for the impact fees, but it's still part of the plan.
Okay. So all of those are in there, and what people like myself are used to seeing, when you're going to, your client's going to develop a certain piece of property, you'll be able to go to one of y'all's maps and say, "Okay, this is what's proposed in that area," not just see what projects are there. Or you'll see both, I guess.
You'll see both.
Okay. Sorry, I wrote my notes in there. Last question I had, so I know Al was showing the, or somebody, I think it was Al, the timeline, and y'all have gone through a lot of meetings, you've had the CAC, which is all good, but one thing I didn't see was a, have these plans ever been sent out or reviewed or had a meeting or anything with the local, like the experts in this, in the relevant field? So like the civil engineers, or the land planners, or the people that do this, have they reviewed and kind of like the local guys that have been doing this for years, like the Larry Urbans of the world, the Carl Cruels who know and have seen the last master plan and the master plan before that? Have they looked at these and provided input?
We're very fortunate in that on the CAC, we do have some local engineering and developers on there that have opined on that. Do you want to?
Sure. Geez, I was trying to get out of here by 6:30, but whatever. Okay.
Usually, I'm with you.
Commissioner York, yes, what we expect, you know, as I started by saying, we engaged the public, and we're continuing to do that, but what we expect to happen is that, you know, Bart Brazelton and Moses Masagashi and whoever, and Trey Summers, who is a part of the Coastal Bend Home Building Group, even though we've met with them, I would hope that they would keep them up to date. You know, there are several people on CAC that are in the real estate group, I'd hope they keep them up to date. So we, yes, we've met with, we met with the Coastal Bend Home Builders Group, we've met with AGC, we've met with, I think, the Corpus Christi Chamber for Commerce Infrastructure Design Committee, if you will. So we've had meetings where we thought, and of course, all this stuff, we just put on our website, right, and we say, "Hey, world, go to our website, we have a QR code, and you can find anything you want," right? If anyone calls, like someone called the other day and said, "Hey, we want you to, we want you to meet with us on this," okay, great. So we do it. We try to reach, and you know, you know, this is, you mentioned experts, right? All of the meetings that we've held, and I mentioned, and even Kim mentioned, that they're all public meetings, right? They're not off, you know, they're not off-limits. They're public meetings, whether they're workshops, CAC meetings, Planning Commission, City Council. The engagement is challenging in this city, right? You put it out there, but only people who are really interested in it will come and say, "Oh, yeah," and ask questions like you're asking now. But the expectation is the CAC members carry to their constituents in their field, their chosen field, so everyone can be updated on what's going on and ask questions, and they will come back and hopefully ask those kinds of questions. So we've met with everyone who we could, right? And if you know someone you'd like us to present this to, we certainly don't mind. But we do have the schedule, and we, and as you know, you may not know, we're completing our community meetings, if you will, and we're still open to meet if there are other organizations that you feel that have said to you, or either of you said, "Hey, I don't know anything about master plans, I don't know what's going on, why haven't they come and talk to me," or whatever. We don't mind engaging and doing a roadshow.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. Yeah, I think there's definitely, you know, on the CAC, I saw one engineer on there. I know in theory, it sounds great, these people are going to take everything back to everyone else, but we know it doesn't really happen. I stood up on the Planning Commission, I haven't really looked at these until we did our meetings, and I realized it's coming here on Wednesday, and then I spent a week actually like diving into them. So I'm sure most people haven't either, until they realize it's going to go to council, or it's already been approved, and then they'll just complain about it.
If you mind, this goes to council on January 23rd, so there's a ton of time between now and then. Of course, everyone's doing holidays, so, and we've got a lot of meetings set up during that time, so there's still time to engage and discuss, and even after council, there's still time to engage and discuss, even though I'm going to give these over to Nick and Gabriel over there. So, but we're just carrying the water until that time. So if you know others or other groups or individuals that would want to talk, discuss, reach out, and we'll certainly engage accordingly.
I'll make sure and do that. And I mean, I know, like I said, I looked at it, I have some comments, and I'll make some of them at the comment period, but it's just things I'd like to see looked at before this goes forward to get approved, you know, final, and I think it would be good to get some other input as well.
Ramon Yos. So we've had a couple other engineers show up sporadically throughout the 23 meetings. Okay. Yeah, they've come over, they sat down, they've given their comments. So we've had about six other engineers show up, other than Carl Crowell and Larry Urban, but about five of the firms have shown up to do that part that you're referring to. Yeah, he came, he came one time. So like sporadically, it's all the time, we've seen everybody coming.
I was just using their names, because I know they've been around for a long time, and they have knowledge, but they didn't actually say they want to do anything, they were just examples.
Yeah, we have plenty of people show up and give an input. All right. Thanks, guys.
That's all the questions I have for now.
Any other commissioners have questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Llerma?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm not an engineer, I'm not an architect, I'm a retired citizen, and I've been on council for two years. This is my first year as a planning commissioner. It's one of those areas, the planning commissioner, that I feel that things that are brought to us, for us to vote on, are rushed very quickly. We get a five-minute report, and we're expected to vote on that and finalize it right then and there. This, from what Al was telling me, has taken him two years, more or less, for y'all to go through this. Where in the loop has the planning commission been? It seems like we were never in that loop. We weren't kept abreast of what's happening with y'all's meetings with these different organizations, to hear from them also. I would have loved to have heard from these organizations, these engineers, these, the developers, the realtors of the city, to get their input, and we could ask questions from them. We were left out of that loop. But yet, we're being told that we need to vote on this, to pass it on to council, to have the final vote, and we've only been addressing this for the last three weeks. It's a lot of information for us to absorb and read, especially those that aren't engineers. I mean, thank God that we have people like Commissioner York, that's an engineer, Munoz over here, Commissioner Munoz, they're, they work in that field, so they let us understand a little better. But I, at this point, don't feel comfortable to make that decision and stamp my name on something that's going to make the city's future for 10 years without studying it more a little longer. I think this commission needs to be given that opportunity to read over all these documents, meet a couple of times, and discuss them amongst ourselves. I think that's very, very important, ladies and gentlemen. I don't like anything being shoved down my throat, and I'm in a position right now that I feel that it's being shoved down my throat, because we have a timeline. Well, that's y'all's timeline. What's our timeline? To absorb this and make the right decisions. That's my concern. I mean, I don't know how the rest of the commissioners feel, but that's how I feel.
I, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Buck, there is a Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 395 requires a robust public input, and it was my idea to put Planning Commission on the public, in the, as a part of the public input. It wasn't required, it was, it's just another opportunity to have a public meeting to talk about this, citizens can come and say, "Yes, no, maybe so," or whatever, right? But it wasn't required, right? So, again, as I said earlier, it is, we're giving you this briefing, right, and I wanted to make one factual statement. I think I've been in Planning Commission twice and talked about the master plans and kind of showed the schedule and showed where we are and where we're going and those kind of things. So again, just to, just again, to have the, to check the box on the public engagement, right? I understand what you said, it's a lot of information, and of course, the word, and the same thing for City Council, right? It's a lot of information for quote-unquote "non-technical" people to kind of understand, right? But it's not your job to understand it, it's the CAC members' job to understand it. You are to reach out to the CAC members and say, "Hey, is this good, is this bad?" Like this gentleman has done, he's, of course, he's in the industry, but council has appointed CAC members from the community, right? Architects, engineers, developers, people, who have spent the two years with us to get to this point, right? So, Commissioner, I would say, and I say to all of you, right, many of you feel like him, "Gosh, we're drinking from a fire hose," but you don't have to. You've got, there have been people, regular folks, just like me, if you think I'm regular, that's been with us all along the way, right? So it's not for you to be the expert in terms of water, wastewater, stormwater, and roads. You're to look at Mr. Brazelton, or, you know, Ramon Yos, or whoever else, Moses, and say, "Hey, is this, does this make sense, is this right," or whatever, and they'll give you their opinion, right? They're not, they're not Stepford wives that have been programmed to say things, they'll give you their free opinion, and I guarantee you, if Mr. Brazel, you ask Mr. Brazel, and he'll say something totally different from what I'm saying now. The point is, they're, they've engaged with us for two and a half years, right? You can't possibly get to their level of knowledge in, you're right, in two workshops and this presentation. The idea is for you to trust their judgment, right? That's, that's why you select the committee, that's why everyone, that's why the committees are, right? You trust their judgment. Yes, sir.
Al, maybe this will help with some of the anxiety. So the city's comprehensive plan and its master plans are a living document, so they can be amended at any time. So we adopt this master plan, and six months later, we say, "Oh, well, this pipeline going north to south should be catty corner or something," and we can come back and amend any little section that may need some tweaking. So this is not a all-or-nothing, be-all, it's a living document, and it will be amended as we go along.
What is the process for that? What is the process for those amendments?
So for comprehensive plan amendments, they come to Planning Commission for a public hearing, and then it's forwarded to the city manager for a recommendation, and then that, then the city manager presents it to the city council. The city council has 60 days to act on that, and then they can either approve, approve the amendments, or send it back to the Planning Commission for modifications or to rework it to meet their criteria.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions for staff?
No question. How old are, we have, we have current master plans in place, correct?
Yes, various stages, yes.
And how, like, how old are they? Are they coming up for readoption? Is that why we're going through this?
The city is, and we've, and Gabriel, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and you can, Nick, too, we've sort of abandoned the master plan process, and we've lived on area development plans. The area development plans have basically kind of managed areas of the city, and it's, "Oh, yeah, you need a street there, you need a drainage here, you need a road improved there," that kind of thing. We do have master plans that have been on the shelf, and the Drainage Trust Plan is 2008, right? We bring, when we bring reimbursement agreements to council, sometimes there are amendments, those master plans, when we bring water reimbursement agreements to council, sometimes there are amendments to those master plans, but the all-inclusive overall master plan, you know, I, it's, although we looked at those to inform what we did here, but they're all over the place, all different ages, all different, all different stages of development.
Well, my comment is, in general, I think planning, city planning is important. Master plans are important, and so I'm all for, for master plans. I think it's a great idea, and as a planning commissioner, as a contractor, I can't be expected to understand every project that the city needs. So I agree with you in what you said, that that's why you employ CAC members, that's why we have Pape Dawson, that's why other members who are, that's their job, it's their job to understand it, and we're asked to review it and to comprehend it as much as we can, but really to trust the professionals to do that. And so that's, that's my two cents. I appreciate the work the CAC has done, I appreciate the work Pape Dawson has done, I appreciate the work that you have done as the city, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you very much for that statement.
Chairman, if you're ready for public comment, you need to open public comment.
Okay. I just got a couple of questions before we open public comment, or a couple of comments. So first question is, since engagement of the Planning Commission wasn't required by Chapter 395?
Correct.
Does anything that we have to do within this body make... Does anything that we have to do within this body make any, have any effect on what happens next?
Mr. Chair, everything you do matters, right? Because you guys, you guys know people, too. We're not blowing you off and saying whatever. Everything you do matters.
Then let me ask you a direct question, since I was a little vague. If, if we recommend denial of this and it goes to City Council, will that require a three-quarter vote for passage?
No, there's no requirement in the charter for a three-quarter vote on that.
Okay. So, they just got to count to five. And my, my reservations with this, so we've, yes, you, you've presented timelines to us and we've seen it. We've, you know, we've acknowledged it. And then we were made notified of, of two meetings. That workshops, they weren't public meetings because there was no public engagement. But between the, the Planning Commission and, and the City Council and, you know, the fire hose came out and, of course, we dumped it in. And myself and Michael and others were feverishly writing down comments and waiting for our opportunity to ask questions. There was a couple of questions that I asked that kind of caught the consultants in, like, what appeared to be deer in headlights. Like, what are the growth assumptions? Because, yes, I understand the calculus that went into the growth assumptions with regards to plats, rooftops, you know, permit applications and things of that nature. But the actual population growth assumptions, I was told that those meetings was 2%. And the city hasn't seen 2% growth in a very, very long time. It's always been sub-one, right, hovering around 1% per year.
Yeah, so the, the gentleman that spoke, the consultant that spoke, he was, he spoke in error. Then the, this whole model was built out of one, was built on a 1.3% growth rate. But, but I would say to you, as I said in the letter I sent to all of you, even a 2% growth rate is like, oh, my gosh, it's not, it's, it's still meaning we're growing at a snail's pace, right? So, you, you got something from a citizen that says, hey, the growth rate at 2% is trying to, kind of, kind of stack the, the CIP numbers to, for many other reasons. Well, again, as, as Kim said, and one of the things I wanted to point out, because I got a feeling that a lot of people don't know how master plans should work, it only happens if growth happens, right? But a lot of those numbers that you saw, we still have to deal with a lot of streets, pipes in the ground are too small, our water system, a ton of things that are, that have nothing to do with growth, right? If I would take a guess, I'd say 40% of that, those numbers are dealing with growth that we hope happens over the next 10 years. The 60%, you and I have to do that in bonds or, or city CIPs. And as she said, if you look at the city CIP, a lot of, it's just a lot of deferred maintenance that has, that has occurred that's just costing so much money today. So, I, I remember your comment about growth and so, you know, let's say he made it, if, he made him a second and said 2%. But even at 2%, we're, we're still, we're, you know, we're at 317 and we, we were 317 when I came here in 2019. And you know where we are? About 320, right? So, it, we are challenged to, to, to get to where we need to get to, which means that, God willing, yeah, we'll grow. But if we don't, right, all this stuff are just numbers on paper until growth says, hey, that needs to happen. But the deferred maintenance are, the deferred maintenance in all of the projects we need to do still needs to happen, especially those with the consent decree is what she was trying to share with you. So, I just want you to, to, I, I understand your concern, but 1.3%, you know, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's not good, but it's, it's what we have to deal with today.
And furthermore, and my concerns aren't with regards to the master plans themselves because I know that, that, like, like Buck said, it's a, a living document and things change. But it is, it is acting as the basis from which impact fees will be calculated. Correct?
Right.
So, walking that line and, and making sure that we're doing this in an effort to promote growth, but at the same time, not putting ourselves in a position where we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Because the assumptions that we're making are based off of a number that is inflated beyond what the actual, you know.
I'm glad you shared that with me because, and I want, and, you know, we want to be clear and, and, and I'm, so, with all of you, I want to be clear. The roads are $1.5 billion. The water is $1.8 billion. The stormwater, I think, is $900 million. And I can't remember what the other is, but my point is this. The CAC members sets the rate. These are, it's not Development Services, it's not Public Works, it's not CCW. The CAC members will, will recommend a rate, right? And that recommendation will go to council and they can go, hmm, not in the northwest, we want it to be this. Or not in Flower Bluff, we want it to be that, right? One of the things we, we are kind of talking about is that, really to promote all of the, you know, infield development because we have a ton of lots, not just down here, but in downtown or in the city, then we want to incentivize growth in those areas. The impact fee should reflect that, right? So, that, and we're having those meetings now. So, just because a number is at $2 billion, doesn't, that's not a reflection of what the, absolutely has no reflection on what the, the impact fee ultimately will be recommended to council. And then even if a gross number is recommended to council, council still has a, a right, no, we want it to be this, right? So, even down to zero, right? So, so I, I don't want any of you to think, councilmen and others, I don't want any of you to think that, oh, my gosh, this $2 million number is influencing the, the, the ultimate impact fee recommendation. CAC, you know, will make a recommendation based on, they're members of the community. So, they know what we can do and carry and what we can't. So, it's not me. It's, it's those 15 members that will.
I have a question on that because my understanding is that's exactly what they're going to do. They may be setting the fee, but they're only doing that based on the data they've been given.
But, but what, and you can help me, Kara, but what I'm saying is that if, if the roads are $1.5 billion, so what? Right? That has absolutely nothing to do with the, the recommended impact fee for.
Well, it does, from what I saw, in the storm worksheet where there was, there was a document about calculating the impact fee and it literally took the $143 million for the 10-year Oso Creek improvements and then said, here's how we distribute population or something, divide it, $143 million divided by this, here's your impact fee. And then went on to kind of show how it could be distributed because it's not equally spent in all the areas. But that tells me these fees are pretty much calculated right off those CIP amounts.
That's an example used, right? But when presenting it to the CAC members, and we're, as I said, I can't remember the one we discussed the other day, that's just an example used, but CAC is the ultimate in making what they think is a reasonable recommendation for the community in which we live in. So.
Well, I understand that, but I, if I'm, well, sitting here as a planner, I want to make sure that the CAC has the most accurate data because they're going to make a decision. If they don't know that those costs are inflated substantially, then there might be, okay, well, this makes sense. Looking at your example, we're going to calculate it this way. But if those costs, you know, if $8 billion.
About the cost being inflated.
Yes. Well, and I was going to save these till the comment period, but we're kind of hit there now in the question period. So, yes, this is why I brought up, I think that these plans, including the estimates and the CIP projects, should be reviewed by local experts because I understand you've got the CAC. But it, and me reviewing it for, you know, just the very little time I did in the last week, I poked a bunch of holes and created a bunch of questions because I do this every day. And I think other engineers would come up with the same questions and land planners would come up with questions in their fields. And I'd like to see what the planners or who, whatever expert does growth rate stuff, you know, I'd like to see those, the input on that stuff. Everything looked very, very high. And what I don't want to see, you know, we've been using trust funds for a long time. And historically, what happens in the trust funds, we as the engineers are required to submit an estimate and that's the money that's encumbered. That's kind of the same estimating process that's, that's going on here. But historically with trust funds, the engineers were required by the city to use city bond project unit costs, which are substantially higher than what a developer would pay. And then we end up with, you know, $1.5 million encumbered for a project that costs $600,000. And council many times would say, why is this keep happening? Well, because these estimates are overinflated. And that wasn't a huge issue at the time because that money that didn't get spent went back into the trust fund. But it's an issue if we're going to use that inflated number to then base our impact fee off of. So, that bothers me. And just looking at a few of those estimates, I saw things that stood out to me big time, like 15% engineering when we've never, I've never got paid 15%. I got yelled at for putting 12. And 12's always been the max. So, that was, you know, why is it 15%? Contingency of 30%. That seemed crazy. I realized these are high-level, you know.
Numbers, right.
Numbers. So, there's going to be some contingency. But, I mean, I saw mobilization in there at 15% and that's usually 3%. So, that's, those were numbers I'd like to see some other experts look at and say, or get explanations, why are these so high?
All right, let me, we got a lot to unpack. Let's go right back to start the beginning with Michael's question. We added this slide really to try to talk more about, from the workshop, your question on growth. The whether it's 1%, 2%, 50% for the city as a whole. All of the planning is done by the area development plan area and each one has its individual growth. And so, we really did stop and take, and the CAC stopped along the way to say, do we agree with all, with these other sources of number? We looked at employment growth projections, you know, platted lots and that growth projection, take the MPO numbers. There was a number of sources. So, you can see, really, other than London, everything is fairly, you're going to have some a little higher, some a little lower. But there aren't really any areas where there's a screaming discrepancy between that. And most of the numbers are usually coming in, in the neighborhood or a little even lower in some cases than, than the MPO growth rate. London is the one, and the committee spent a lot of time, especially the developers in the group, saying, wait, I know residential's going to be here. I know people are talking on this property. I know this is what's coming. I know these specifics, which really brought that up over what you see from the MPO and the lot historical data because it is a high-growth area. And so, all of the numbers and the projects of how we got to the projects are based on those growth. So, the impact fee does say, what are these? But remember, Kim talked about there's the ultimate and then it backs down to 10. Then you start to say what is based on growth. And that's the component then that can go into the impact fee. There's then a formula that cuts that in half, basically, as the starting point for consideration of a fee. The committee, and in some cases, will be looking at, it doesn't necessarily make sense to even start at 50 because we think there's some different issues happening in this area and look at those discrepancies and where they want to modify. So, Michael, to your question on methodology of cost estimates, we did look at comparing it to the city's current bond CIP for five years. Corpus Christi Waters' cost for SSO repairs and replacements. The methodology is used following a consistent planning-level cost estimate that you would use for a public project. They are always higher than what a developer pays. And that's a story in any city, in any case. Those numbers are planning you have to do, but you're also starting a window where by the time you get to 10 years, those costs are going to be much lower. And so, it's, it's a balance out, but it is a methodology that's used. Also, each of these costs come out very consistent to what Corpus Christi Waters says they think they need to deal with sewer spill projects. Roadway looked very consistent with what in the current bond projects. That's why there's that zero number in the near term for those because they're funded with city bond and those costs were consistent. So, we did do a not just, let's make numbers up, we did compare them to other sources. We did compare to other existing city-approved plans that are being implemented. And we are consistent with that. Are all the projects in there? No. So, there's always some little difference there. But those that are, we have a fairly consistent total dollar in concept that's in those numbers.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we started on that. So, we've kind of moved. That's why I wanted to at least kind of come back to.
So, I, I appreciate your explanation on that. And I understand you're estimating. What, what bothers me on it is, you know, like what I was saying, I, it's just, it's always going to be more. I understand. You know that and you're using those numbers. But in the, the Local Government Code 395, it says that these impact fees have to be based on the actual cost of the project. To me, the actual cost of the project is what a developer would spend. I know cities cost more to build stuff, but I, I don't know, I'm not the legal expert. I don't know. Should the impact fee be based, you know, the way I read that, the impact fee should be based on what the developer would spend to build the project because that's the actual cost. When we would do trust fund things, the, the city always argued, well, we want you to estimate it higher because if they default and leave, we have to build it and people charge us more, which it is what it is. But when you're doing the impact fee, if we're, if we're estimating it this way based on public costs, not private costs, are you, is it your opinion that that represents the actual cost of the development?
Yes, that's what the financial folks, and remember, let's, one other thing on impact fees. While the projects in that horizon is looked at of 10, you bring it back and an impact fee has to be by 395 reevaluated every five years at the, it can be reevaluated more often than that. But the longest distance is every five years. The CAC has to reconvene and revisit that. So, if there's changes in the master plan that change costs along the way, that something is significantly, you know, city builds a bond that was in the CIP for some reason, or projects are moved significantly out, they can revisit those costs along the way. But no more than every five years do they come back and evaluate those costs.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I see none, so I'll go ahead and open up the public comment on item number, where are we at? 12. Mr. Garza.
Good evening, everybody. I know it's been a long day and the weather's not exactly weather to, to, to feel good about. So, it's a dreary day, so here we are. But thanks for all your comments. First off, I want to say that it's not intentional that we don't bring the information to you or that information hadn't come to you in, in an earlier timeframe. But quite frankly, it's hard to present a product that's not finished. And it's taken us two and a half years to get to a point where we are today. I think out of 23 meetings, I probably attended maybe, I don't think I missed maybe more than two meetings, maybe one meeting. But I know that in all the meetings that, that I've attended and in some of the workshops that I may have missed, I still felt that maybe I fell behind, kind of like when you miss a day of school because you're sick and you're early years and, and there's something you really got to capture and you feel that you didn't get a full gist of it. But I think the product that's been brought to you, I think, is, I'm not saying it's perfect, but I think it's good enough. And quite frankly, it's really critical. If you don't make a decision or you deny sending it forward, or you've got an option to be able to look at everything that's presented. If you've got some areas that you've got some concern about or that kept your interest or somebody's told you about, hey, you really got to look at this part, you know, you should make a list of all the things that you recommend to, to be amended and send it forward to the council in that manner. We've gone through years. I'm, I'm not sure. I think I, some of the master plans, the actual master plans, we had, dated back to the 60s and 70s. We had a new, when I was in the Planning Commission, even before I got on the council, we had a master stormwater plan that came, no, not stormwater plan, take it back. It was a master wastewater plan that came to us that was designed by one of the local engineering firms. And it had over 100 lift stations. And the landowners and developers and everybody south of the, of the, of the Oso came up here and said, this, this is going to be way too expensive. If we could just figure out a way to get that, that wastewater to flow using gravity, we could probably reduce the number of, of lift stations in this particular plan and it would actually make development more affordable. And so, that, that particular option or the particular wastewater plan got shot down. In this particular case, we've got some plans that I think have been thoroughly looked at. When I was on the council and even before then on the Planning Commission, and you, you served on the Planning Commission long enough, there's so many zoning requests or so many plats come in and it's, oh, the worst thing about this part is that we've got flooding in this. That, that was always the biggest issue of flooding, I think, for developing a property or rezoning a property. And quite frankly. And quite frankly, it's critical to get your drain, your drainage right. I mean, that's, that's one of the ones that I probably spent the most time on. But when I was on the council, even on the council, we didn't have, we hadn't received, seen an option, and nobody even mentioned the possibility of having an option, of being able to make some improvements to the Oso Creek, which is, from a south side standpoint, it's the largest carrier of water to the Oso Bay Area. And so again, if, even we did it in incremental basis, increments, it would, it would reduce the potential for flooding. If we developed south of the Oso, we've already had several flood events that have created overflow of that, of that particular, I'm going to say drainage ditch, drainage creek. And with the improvements, we could probably be able to handle most of the water that needs to come off of the development on the south of the Oso. Now, for a long, long time, both on the Planning Commission and on the council, the city leaders, the city policymakers said, hey, don't offer any wastewater south of, south of the Oso. We don't want it to grow. We've got to figure out this flooding, we've got to figure these issues out. And quite frankly, it was not the right decision, because again, guess what? Develop happened anyway, and it didn't happen following a good, logical manner. Everybody went to developing half-acre or acre tracts, and, and putting wastewater, excuse me, the, help me, septic systems, right, of which, I mean, those, those systems aren't even, I'm going to say, healthy to utilize in the Florida Bluff area, in the island area. You've got to, you've got to have city sewer. So there's, I'm going to say there's going to be challenges that you're going to have, whether you adopt these plans or not, things are going to, but you have a better chance of addressing most of the issues, not all of them, but you've got a better chance of addressing the issues that are likely to rise up. Now, related to the cost concerns, and I've got some concerns of my own, I mean, a billion here, a billion there, a billion there, now, you're really talking about some real money. I mean, I know when we started talking about trying to solve the, or address the SSS, SSO issues with the EPA, I mean, we knew it was going to be around a billion dollars, that was, started talking about them probably 10 years ago, and we probably started working on, actually getting to an agreement four years ago, we probably started doing some improvements six years ago. So we're probably right now four years into a 15-year plan, because we've still got about 11 years. So a good chunk of that wastewater improvements is stuff that has to occur anyway, because it's, 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 it's by edict of the EPA, you've got to do it. The cost concerns, related to it not being exactly what you think they are in your experience, and I know, I thought that the engineering fees shouldn't be above 15% either, but guess what? In most of the street projects, some of the darn engineering fees came in at 18%, which, I mean, I'd rather see that money going down in asphalt than engineering fees, but that's what they were. And I don't know what the correct number is, I just know that at the end of the day, regardless of what we adopt, at the impact, in terms of impact fees, it's not going to be the full till, it's not going to be the full ticket, it's not going to be 100% that growth is going to pay for, through impact fees, 100% of the cost of the growth. Some of it's going to continue to be funded from areas of the, now, what we've done before, I'm not, at the time that the developer's funds were suggested, it was probably the only tool that might have been even accepted or adopted, but at this point in time, I think it's time for a change. I think that we need to do things in a more logical manner, in the way that other cities are doing them, in order to be able to capture the costs that are strictly attributed to that particular activity. And so, you've got two or three options, and the option, I know that you've got of saying, hey, can we deny it? Yes, you can deny it. You could say, no, we're not going to send it forward. But keep in mind, when you've got a decision to make six months down the road, that you know, the longer that you wait, the reduced amount of options that you're going to have, and the likelihood that you're going to be able to pick the best option is going to be greatly reduced. So, I strongly recommend that you make, make a decision, because we do need master plans. One of the things when serving on the council, is that I got from the engineering community, particularly Mr. Urban, Larry Urban, who's been developing this community for years, is saying, hey, you guys don't have any up-to-date master plans. And I think that we should adopt master plans with a good vehicle by which, and I've told Mr. Raymond that, with a good vehicle, good manner by which you can, you can modify them or amend those, those master plans. We would have never gotten to a point where we could have adopted the UDC. I sat on the Planning Commission, and we worked till 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, a lot of meetings, going through the UD stuff, UDC material, item by item. And at the end of the day, we were able to adopt UDC plans with the clarification that if we've got some changes we've got to make in order to keep development going, that we can make those modifications, we can make those amendments, and we can keep on going. And so again, one of the things that I will give you a little insight on, in the first four or five meetings, we talked about nothing but land use, because there was a lot of debate back and forth. I know the growth rate, my number, they said growth rate exactly 1.3% over the last 20 years. My number was about 1.4, so I was a little bit off, but still, even 1.4 to 2%, if you're thinking that's what they're generating, no, I think most of the numbers were in the 1.5%, 1.4, 1.5% rate. But the conversations that we had were saying, no, this isn't going to happen in this area. And Mr. Brazelton, Moses, Alex Harris, we had Mr. Summer with, Trey Summer with Hogan Holmes on the committee, and they were all talking, no, this is what we see happening in this area, this is what we see happening in this other area. And there was a lot of insight and a lot of discussion made about where the engineering group and the consultants should be looking at for growth, so they can fully study and be able to come forward with the recommendations that we're going to need to make in those areas where the earth, where the growth was going to occur. Again, so there's been a lot of work done, and again, I understand the reluctance of not fully understanding, because again, there's a lot of information there that's been done, and it's been over, over a period of about two, two and a half years. And the timeline, believe me, the timeline was earlier than we are now. We stretched it out because of all the conversations, and all the information that we've asked for, and, and gotten, in order to be able to get to this point right now. And at the end of the day, it gets approved, it doesn't get approved, I don't know, but I think that regardless of what you do, the best action to take is to come up with a list of amendments of those areas that you feel specifically concerned about, and send them forward, and then let the council, and let the council work it out and decide what they want to do going forward. But the Planning Commission, you know, the most things that we hear a lot about are the zoning, but quite frankly, your most important function is planning. And without decent planning, your community's going to grow just in a hodgepodge manner, and we're going to be suffering, you know, sins that we commit today, you know, for 50 years. So, good luck, guys.
You've still got 30 more seconds, Rudy, on your three minutes, if you want to keep going.
We wondered if you were timed.
Any other comments, Mr. Munoz?
Back to you, sir.
He signed up.
So, a lot of the questions I heard today, we've gone through those questions, it's just the opportunity we had, we spent over 120 hours in meetings, you know, researching, talking to Pape Dawson. So, Michael, your comments, we asked the same questions. What's it based on? Can we do private construction costs, or do we have to do public construction costs? Everything I've heard tonight, we've already repeated it to them. We've gone through it, we got a response from them, you know, we recommended it to, you know, City Council as approved, as our general committee did. There may have been an individual here and there that did not recommend for these maps to be approved, but overall, we voted yes as a group. You guys can look up my phone number, if you've got questions related to the plans, call me up, I'll sit down with you guys. If you got, if I can't answer your question, I'll find a way to get an opportunity to answer it for you guys. But right now, overall, as a SEAC member, I'm going to have to tell you guys, we've worked real hard on these. We've communicated with stormwater, transportation, wastewater, CCW, we've met several times, you know, at the meeting setting and in their office separately. So, we've put a lot of effort into these maps, and we hope you guys recommend them as well. Thank you.
Bart Brazelton, I'm a SEAC committee member, and just a couple of comments. When Rudy calls me Mr. Brazelton, I was like, my dad served on that committee?
That's not called him, Fred.
Yeah, okay, that's what it is. So I'm, I, you know, when it's Mr., I know I'm in trouble, I'm being set up for something, but I just, I heard a couple of things, and I wrote some notes, and I'm just kind of answering some general comments that I heard. There was a great deal of work put into this, I will tell you. Development Services did not, I don't think my friend Al, I think he had long hair when he started this, because I don't think he realized how dispersed our master plans, if you could call them that, actually were. I will not tell you how old I am, but there are plenty of, there were several of those plans my age, that we ended up, like we did tonight, amending master plans a piece at a time. So that's one, one thing. As to the amendment process, I think Buck was referring to the comp plan amendment process. To not, to my memory, we have not yet discussed how these plans will be amended, because we understand somewhere in there, their SEAC is involved. So I think it is a good point to, to discuss, at this point, we do not know how these will be amended. Couple other comments, the MPO growth numbers are less than, less than 1% for the next 10 years, and we're using 2%. I sat down after that last workshop with Justin from Pape, and our friends, Pape Dawson are excellent engineers, they have done a very good job, this is a lot of work. And I tried to, tried to get Justin to explain it to me, and I guess I'd just been in the room too long, because I didn't quite understand how overestimating growth does not directly impact what the final, it directly impacts what the costs are. So I, that was just something that got, that was mentioned. To Michael's point, I reviewed, and I think there were 238 sewer projects, and I looked at them all, because I took my job very seriously, my role in this. And I have, is my hometown, born and raised, and I knew where most of those streets were. I had to go look up a few, but I looked at every one of them, and at some point, it's, well, is it an eight-inch, or, you know, is it a 12-inch? Is it, what pipe is it? What's the depth? Some of that is pretty clear, that that can, that can vary a little bit. The question is, do we really need it? Do we really need that pipe in the ground? Do we really need that road put on the ground? And that was the point that I raised several times as part of this committee. I didn't, I wasn't successful often, I will, I will say. Just the last two things that I heard, and, and again, I think several of you have made the comments about taking this very seriously, and that's what I did. I heard a couple of other comments in closing, that 60/40, I think, I think it was said that 40% is growth, 60% is CIP? Did I, was that, did I get, that was the comment. Everybody keeps forgetting this, that 40%, that growth, they're also paying the CIP on top of the impact fee. So remember, all these new people that are paying these impact fees are also taxpayers, so they get hit twice. And finally, I heard this very, very distinctively tonight, and, and it's a question that came up several times in SEAC meetings. When it gets right down to it, the fee is completely subjective. There might be $5 billion of costs there, but in the end, it can be zero, and it's completely subjective. It's really going to be how much can you really charge somebody before they just throw a fit? I can tell you how high that, how that number has impacted the city next door. So this is a process, a legal process set up by state law to tax people. That's all it is. The money will be used to build that, build, build the structures, but in the end, the recommendations from SEAC, the recommendations from Planning Commission, and what the council finally decides, is just one more tax. And I hope this commission will remember that. Thank you.
Does anybody have the vote tally from the SEAC?
I don't even think it was recorded.
Right, I think it was all voted, voted.
Yeah.
I think there was a couple, it was, the dominant vote was yes.
It was unanimous.
It would be supermajority of that vote.
Here's my personal reservation, or, I'm sorry, I haven't closed the public comment session. Would anybody else like to speak on item number 12? I see none. So I'll close the public comment. Here's my personal reservations, is, I don't like to put my name on anything that I don't fully understand. And I appreciate the outreach, and Al, I appreciate you involving the Planning Commission, but I kind of wish you hadn't, because I've attended two workshops, at which we were presented with an iPad that we couldn't take home with the information on it. The information, I had to go find through a link provided by Ruth on the city's website. You go to those links, and you download them, and the resolution is so poor, that when you zoom in on any individual maps, you can't read, decipher between red, blue, yellow, green, black, white, and what street and where. So, I can't put my name on anything that I don't fully understand, and I cannot, I listened from three members of the SEAC tonight, two of which seem to be aligned, and one seems to be a polar opposite of the other two. And I had, I had the privilege of attending one of the most recent SEAC meetings, and I was taking a lot of notes. And it appeared to be one of the first meetings where there was, there was actual discussion on what the fee structure would look like. So, we know how the, how the fees are being, come up with, and we look at the fee structure, and I've said this before, but I'll say it again, I looked at, I sat down and I jotted down some notes, and my notes was a fee calculation on a particular project, because it was the first time that I ever realized that our city was any different than any other city. And, because I've been in commercial construction for the past 20-something years, and I've only worked in City of Corpus Christi. And so I sat down, and I, we were building AEP Crosstown for AEP Ohio, not AEP Texas. And it was a 95,000-square-foot building on 22 acres of concrete paving, total cost of the project was $22 million, and the calculated development services building permit fee was $186,000 bucks. And I just handed it over to the owner like it was no, no problem. And the owner looked at it and said, what is this? And I said, it's your building permit fee. And he said, I have built the same building all over the United States, and I've never seen a building permit fee this high. And my counterargument to him was, well, at least we don't have any impact fees down here. He said, oh, yeah, you're right. So, I worry, similar to what Mr. Brazelton had to say, is, when does the development community, or, you know, the end user, or the home buyer, or the person wanting to start a business in the City of Corpus Christi and build a capital investment, when do they say, we can't do it, we got to look elsewhere? So, and I don't understand this enough, because I have not, I have not had the information in front of me, I wasn't, received a printed copy, and I would really prefer 24 by 36, you know, colored drawings of all the, all the plans. If you want me to say, yes, I approve of this, and this has my stamp of approval, and I'm giving my recommendation to the city council, I haven't had the input sessions like Rudy, Ram, and Bart have had. So, I'm going to abstain, because I can't put my name on anything that I don't fully have my head wrapped around. So, those are my comments.
Yes. With everything being said, I was really happy that you guys came up here to speak on Rudy and Brad, and, got your name, anyway. So, because of that information that you shared with us, I found that, I know that you guys have worked really hard on the meetings, because I've attended some of them, and I know they're very intense on some issues that y'all have to speak about. This is something that I've been, I was looking at, and like Commissioner York, he's an engineer, I'm not- I'm not an engineer, I don't know all the technical things, I'm not a, you know, an architect, but some of the things that were shared on these workshops were overwhelming. And with everything that was being said, I just, as a planning commissioner, I just want to make sure that I make a recommendation that's effective for all the taxpayers, because this is, that's who's gonna be paying it. And it's really important for us to understand this, to the best of our ability, to make the right decision. And there's so much information even now, tonight, that's being shared, that it's the first time I'm hearing it. So it's difficult for me to say, or to put my name on it, as my chairman here spoke on, and say that this is something that I truly represent 110% without any doubt. And that's hard for me to say this tonight, because I don't understand it all. There's so much more that I would really like to hear about, and, and I'm not saying that we don't need a master plan, Corpus Christi does, the waste county, every, we all do here. I see it, I know it, I've lived here all my life. But for something that's gonna be planned for the next 10 years, we may not all be sitting here in this chairs that we're sitting in right now, it'd be someone else taking over. So I just want to make sure that the decision I make tonight is gonna stand for the persons that are gonna be coming into Corpus Christi and taking on other official seats, you know, with the other development employees and architects. I agree that Dawson has done an excellent job on all the work that they have done, everybody has. It's a hard work that was put into from everybody. But I just want to make sure that this is something that we're able to reach a decision on, that will improve the city, but also feel good about. And I'm a little concerned that I would not be able to do that, only because I'd like to know a little more. And I'm not saying that this plan is not an excellent plan, it's just that I don't understand it completely for me to go ahead and stamp my approval on it. Because I am a planning commissioner, that is my job for the City of Corpus Christi, and I take it serious. And right now, it's coming up to us, for us to make a decision on, and it's on, it's on us. And I want to make sure that I do the right thing. Thank you, that's it, that's my comment.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
I have one more comment. I have this, I have the same reservations as, as Chairman Miller when it comes to impact fees. I did the same thing you did, I did a calculation on a project I'm on, and, and if I was doing it right, because I really don't quite understand how impact fees are calculated, it was an enormous amount of money that would have been attributed to the owner. So impact fees, I'm not completely sold on, I still need a lot of education, a lot more. I have a lot more to learn about impact fees before I can vote on them. But my understanding is that we're not here tonight to vote on impact fees, we're here tonight to approve a master plan. And from what I understand from the discussion tonight, the master plan, while it is tied to the impact fees, does not dictate the impact fees. So because of that, I am for the master plans, with the understanding that there will be future meetings and future discussions as, as related to impact fees in general. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Commissioner York?
My comments, I, I, first, I want to reiterate, I appreciate all the work that was put into these. Yes, I'm an engineer, I, I could see all the work, it was a lot, there's, there's a lot there, and I, I like it. It's a lot better than the master, you know, than the, the information that we had in our previous master plans. That said, as a planning commissioner, we've now had a week since our last presentation to digest all this and then make a recommendation. I don't feel comfortable doing that yet. I will say, the reservations that I had are a lot less because of your presentation and your responses, so I really appreciate that, it was very helpful, it did sway me. What I would like to see, and I won't make a motion just yet, I kind of want to gauge the room, see how you guys feel, but I, I'm leaning towards asking, or moving to table this just long enough to, I would like to see this brought to experts to get their opinion, whether, and then have you guys publish the comments that you receive, hopefully you actually receive some, and then make any changes. At the very least, then that will make me feel like we gave it one good shot. All the experts got their chance to chime in, and if it changes anything, great, if it doesn't, great, but at the end of the day, at least we sent it out to the people we know are gonna be using this all the time, and if they don't comment at this point, kind of speak now or forever hold your peace, people are gonna complain about it either way, but what happened, what I'm seeing after this last meeting, I guess people kind of woke up and realized, this is about to get approved, and now I'm getting questions and comments from the engineering community, and I, I thought some of these folks were involved in the, the process, but they're asking these questions. So I would like to see, give them an opportunity to give some comments, and have you guys look at it, and then, you know, adjust. And to me, that's looking at the estimate, looking at the methodology used, if they want to comment on that, go for it, doesn't, I'm not saying it wasn't good, but, you know, like when that last stormwater plan came in, everybody hated it so bad, the methodology was used, it never got adopted. I, I don't think that's the case here, the methodology seems fine, but I want to get these people who have 40, 50, 60 years of experience, let's get your thoughts and opinions before we adopt all new master plans for the city, I would feel a lot better about that. I don't think that needs to take very long. I'm not looking for someone to study this for six months, it's something that, like, I looked at it for what amounts to about three hours total over the last week, really hard, and I think I came up with a lot of questions, you answered some of them, I'm not enough of an expert, don't have the experience to ask other questions, I would like to see those people do that. I think it could easily be done in a couple of weeks, although we don't have another meeting this year, is that correct?
Yes, our next meeting is the 10th of January.
Okay, that would be my earliest next, I don't know what that does to your, I know you're not going to council till January 24th.
Commissioner York, if I may, so, so under the charter, following the public hearing, the master plan amendment is forwarded to the city manager, and so this is the opportunity to make your recommendations, and then it's forwarded to the city manager, who then will present it to the city council at, in his plan for January 23rd.
So you're saying we can't table this?
Correct.
It's hard to make recommendations for, and this is kind of what I was afraid of, so we've had a lot of these big things come up where I feel like, why are we even here? You know, like we did this landscape plan that never got looked at by actual landscape architects, and then it was kind of forced down our throat, and then we panicked and tabled it for two weeks, and there was some survey put out that asked the public, "Do you like trees?", they said yes, then it came back. Why are we even here? So I kind of feel like that, again, I, I don't want to delay your process, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but it would make me feel a lot better if I could at least go back to the engineering community, and somebody could go back to the people who are experts in growth rates and go, "Hey, are you sure you're good with this, do you have any comments?", and then we would know if we have a list of things we want to have you guys, you know, address before it gets to council. Right now, I can't really make that list, other than saying, "Please go visit the experts." If that's all I can do, then I guess that's all I can say, but it sucks as a planning commissioner, because basically I'm saying, "Please go do this," and then I walk out of the room, and you can do it or not do it, I have no idea. So it feels kind of pointless.
That could be a recommendation to council.
So, I mean, I guess, when we do other things, we approve, approve with conditions, are you saying we can approve with the condition that you do blank, and present that to council?
Well, it's more of a recommendation, like, like for zoning change, you recommend.
Yeah, I understand we're recommending, but can we recommend approval with conditions? I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is council gonna get there, and they're gonna say, "Oh yeah, they recommend approval," or are they gonna get a presentation that says, "Yeah, they recommended approval, but they wanted this stuff addressed," and then council can go, "Cool, was that addressed?" Because I, I don't want to delay your process, I know you've got, put in a lot of work. If this can be done in a way that doesn't delay it, but these things can be looked at before you get to council, because I, I know some of them, or at least I assume, have the same questions and reservations, so.
Yes, your recommendation would relate to council, whatever it may be.
Is something on fire? That a delay in the, in the project timeline?
The, there have been public notices, legally required public notices put out for the city council, and, and so there will, so there will be a public hearing on, on January 23rd. And, and so council's not obligated to act on the 23rd, but it's anticipated.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm right there with Mike, and, you know, and I've already explained some of my concerns, but I'm, I'm an idiot, and I ask, I ask what I consider to be dumb questions, but they're always really good dumb questions, that people don't have good answers for me, like the growth question, but I appreciate the slide to kind of address that. Another question that I had during the meeting that I just thought of, again, was, you know, there was several projects on Oso Creek that were identified for increased, you know, drainage solutions to accommodate that growth. But I asked the question, was, was Oso Bay itself studied? And the answer to me was no, because, you know, water used to flow under all those bridges crossing Oso Bay. They don't anymore, and because of, you know, silt buildup in Oso Bay. So I always talk about, you know, talking about drainage and stuff to people like my wife and daughter and stuff like that, and we're driving through the botanical gardens, and, you know, they're like, "Well, where does this water flow?" Well, it flows out to Oso Bay. Well, you know, it hadn't rained, why is there water in it right now? Well, that's sea level, you know? So we have the, all of these projects to deepen, widen, expand Oso Creek, but sea level stays where it's at, and, you know, there's a continual silting of Oso Bay, which is the outlet. It's like, you've got a plumbing problem in your house, I'm gonna replace all the, all the drain lines and everything underneath by slab, but I'm not gonna pay attention to all the, you know, oak tree roots growing through my connection to the city. So that's kind of like, you've gotta, you've gotta address it all, you know, holistically, and from a, a big perspective, and when I get an answer like that, you know, to what I consider to be a dumb question, it just gives me pause. So I'm, you know, continuing to, I can't put my name on it, but that's where I'm at.
So can you tell us, I appreciate your comment, I, I don't want to arbitrarily move this forward just because I don't want to delay or pause, I mean, I don't want to unnecessarily delay it, if there's no reason, if the things that I'm concerned about can be addressed before the 24th, great, let's figure out a way to do that. Can you clarify, what are, what are our options here? We can't table this, so we just, we can either vote to recommend approval or deny, and that's it.
Or, or any other recommendations you might have, I approve, but evaluate whatever concerns you may have.
I have a question, Commissioner York, how do we, how do we, and this is just to avoid going down a slippery slope of, how do we pick who the experts are that we consult? I mean, is it's, how is that list generated? And if we generate a list, and then somebody's left out, is that gonna make us have to go back and say, "Well, we gotta table it again, because ex-engineer wasn't consulted, and he should have been consulted"? Like, I feel like that's kind of a, for lack of a better word, slippery slope to go down when you're...
I wasn't thinking of naming a list of people, but we all know who the experts who've been around for 30, 40, 50 years are. I'm in that community, I'm on the commission, what I was gonna ask is, send me an email with links to each of those plans, not the link to all of it, because it's too confusing, there's like 80 documents, just one to each of the master plans, and I'll personally send that to all of the engineers. If they don't want to respond, great, but I'll be very clear, this is your last chance. You know, when that happened to me, I jumped in and looked, apparently these other engineers did too. Some of them, I know what's gonna happen, everybody, you know, people are gonna complain about it either way, you know, a year from now, 10 years from now, but right now, we've got the chance to get some last minute feedback from experts that have been in this community forever, and they might have some things that could alter the plan for the better, I would like to, to wait a little bit and get those potential comments. That's all I'm saying. I, I think we, we, I think it would do us some good. And kind of the same thing for the growth rate, I'm not the expert on that, that's not an engineering thing, maybe you guys have addressed that, maybe the, you know, developers or the experts in that, I don't know. But the growth rate is important to me, because if the growth rate used is higher than the 10-year projects, they're, you know, associated with growth are higher, which means the percentage used for impact fees can be higher, so I, I want to know, I would like that to be as accurate as possible. I know that you've said the impact fee isn't necessarily gonna be calculated based on these numbers, but I feel like they're gonna be used as a tool, so I just would like it to be as accurate as possible. And maybe it is already, again, I'm not the expert in that field, but those are the two things I would like to see, I don't know if anybody on CAC has somebody, they know that would be an expert in growth rate stuff, maybe you guys are, but I know I could reach out personally to the engineering ones and try and get some comments there, and I would like to do that. But as we've been told, we can't, so the process down, so it's going to the 24th, so I guess where I'm at, we are either going to make a motion to approve or deny with recommendations or conditions, or whatever you want to call it, and either way, I would like the recommendations to be solicit some comments, review and comment from local experts in those two fields, people who have, you know, work in growth rates, and people who are civil engineers, work in water, sewer, drainage, and streets, and see if we get any input that might change anything, maybe it doesn't. I left out the most important part, approve or deny. Because I don't know where all you guys sit.
I'm sitting right next to you.
I know where you sit. Well, I, I, nobody else is gonna do it, I guess I'll make a motion. As I said earlier, I came up with a lot of reservations, you guys swayed me on that, so I appreciate that. I do have these last few things I would like to see, we can't table this, so I will make a motion to recommend approval with the recommendation or condition, or whatever you want to call it, that expert comment, review, testimony, or you want to call it, expert chime in, in the areas of civil engineering, you know, experts in the areas of water, wastewater, drainage, and streets, and in the areas of projected growth rates. And then I would like to see those comments published that you receive, and then obviously see what, what changes you've made, if any, based on those. That would make me feel a lot better, I think it would make council feel better. And that is it. Some of those words weren't needed in the motion, sorry.
I second.
Okay.
Sorry, Ruth, oh, Ruth's wrong. Whoever had to write, whoever had to write that motion.
Do y'all understand that motion? All right. Like I said, I'll be abstaining, but all those, we have a motion.
Okay, the motion is to recommend approval with the condition or recommendation, if we're not allowed to make a condition, that they solicit expert review and comment from experts in the areas of water, sewer, drainage, and streets, so civil engineers, basically land development engineer, planner, that, those type of people, and in the areas of growth rate projections. Publish those comments that they receive, if any, and then show the council what changes they made, if any.
I want to, I'm sorry, Buck, I want to make, I want clarification, he's using the term experts. Gabriel is an expert, he's a civil engineer, Ramlin Yose is, Pake Dawson is.
Okay, let's change that to additional comments.
Do, I guess, do you mean local engineers outside of the city?
Yes, thank you, legal expert, for changing my wording. Experts outside of the CAC committee, local experts, yes. You may amend the motion with that language.
Do you still want to second that?
Still second? The amended motion?
Say that again?
So we've changed it now to where, now it says, we, he just clarified that we are asking for review and comment, to solicit comment from local experts outside of the CAC committee.
Okay, so is this, was this within a timeframe, or?
The timeframe stays the same, it's still going to council on the 24th, we can't change the timeframe, is what Buck told us.
But that, yes, I, I second, because I do agree that we, I would like some little bit more information, and the information that we're asking is just, it's just a little bit more for us to be assured, it's not anything to say no to, it's just something that I would feel more comfortable in. in as well. So I say, I second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Let's go ahead and get a roll call vote on this one.
I don't think I, I don't know. I don't think I was. I didn't find the motion I thought I'd be making. Sorry.
Can we still amend?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Maybe not.
Okay. Chairman Miller? York? Mandel? Salazar Garza?
Aye.
Munoz? Magahi? I'm sorry. Say it for her.
Aye.
Lerma? Hedrick?
Aye.
And Bud?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on to the director's report.
There's no director's report this evening. I just want to, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Al.
I want to make you all aware, this is Naina's last planning commission. Naina's return, we had a kind of a party for her, her last day will be next Friday. So she's, has been a great public servant, great for us at, at the City of Corpus Christi. So when we dismiss, please express your thanks for her service and wish her well. Thank you.
We love you, Naina. Sorry I couldn't make it to your party. But, no, we really do appreciate everything that, the contributions to the city, and wish you luck back in San Antonio. We'll come and visit you at the Pearl.
Thank you, and I do want to wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a Happy New Year.
All right, thank you so much. If there's no future adjourned items, I will adjourn this meeting.